Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our item number two is a request to add a .75 FTE. We have our auditor treasurer Lori Johnson and Darren Brook as well from HR. Good morning.
Good morning. What you have on your agenda today is a request to add a .75 FTE permanent position. And I've actually had a variable hour position for, she's been working 12 years, and working at this .75 number of hours, but she just hasn't been getting any benefits. And so I have had, I've had it budgeted in my budget every year for $40,000, which is what this would be. And so there wouldn't be any increased budget amount. There would be an increased amount that we've been spending because we haven't been paying for insurance in the past or giving her the county contribution. So my request is that we make this a permanent position rather than a variable hour position.
The other thing, just as a note, is we did a, Lori did a PDQ, so that was grade out as well. So it's a position that would fall on grade four of the accounting grade.
You said an acronym there that I didn't catch. You said a PDQ.
Oh, Physician Description Qualifications.
Okay.
It's like a job description basis.
All right, thank you.
And at the rate, what, on the grade four, where on grade four would that fall?
Well, I think we're looking at step three since she's been doing it.
Okay. That would tie in then with, okay.
Yeah. And it is actually a decrease in her rate of pay.
Yes.
But when you get the insurance, then she's actually getting an increase because she's being paid 80% of a accounting technician on the rate.
At what point do we start paying benefits? Isn't it over .6 or? She's .75 and she hasn't been getting benefits?
No, it varied, so it was more and less depending on the time of the year, but it overall averaged to be about .75.
Yes, Commissioner Gross, we did talk about that in our, we had a lengthy conversation about this in our personal issues committee meeting. And she did, because she did fall under that variable hour classification, it has different rules on it. And what we're trying to do is remove her from the variable hour and put her into the same classification that anybody else would be working those hours on on a regular basis. And our pick committee fully supported this change. It's pretty much budget neutral. So I, you know, it's a good way to go.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Gross and a second by Commissioner Haney. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Our item number three is a request to purchase a new solid waste transfer trailer. Kirk Rosenberg, good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good.
You finally died off the rain.
Yeah.
Coming before you, Madam Chair, members of the board requesting permission to purchase a transfer trailer, a transfer trip for a solid waste transport. We currently using a transport trailer from City of Morehead. It's about 12 years old. It's being held together by bale of wire and bump gum. We have an obligation with the current folks to bring at least two loads over a day. And we're really kind of concerned about the integrity of the existing trailer. It takes approximately 210 days to get the trailer completed. So as a result, we'd like to get started on it and move forward. But it came, what I brought or included in your packet is we got a quote from the Wilkins Transfer Trailer, or a transfer trailer, it's $80,069. Again, what we're concerned about is the time. It takes, as I said, 210 days to complete it. We're also concerned about potential price increases due to, you know, the material. So we want to get locked in as quick as we can. Also, I've included a quote, we include a scale, onboard scale, to make sure that the trailer's not overloaded. So when it hits the road, we aren't going to get into any kind of problems with that. And then finally, we have what they call wind hammer tarp. You may have seen, the City of Morehead has one on the side of their transfer trailer. The main purpose for that is to help in maintain the integrity of the outside of the trailer. But then the other part of it is, is it really increases the gas mileage by 10 to 15% they say. And since we're moving quite a distance, a large distance, we'd like to try and save whatever, however we can. That comes up with a total of $100,114, and that's what I'm asking for. I also included, just as an FYI, there's a provision, the solid waste does not have to go off for a bit. We are exempt for that state law. I just included that for your information. So with that, I stand ready to answer any questions you might have. One other thing I was going to point out, I was going to, the reason I have waited is that I hope to have this included in our overall package. It's a transfer station, but as you know, we aren't going to build a transfer station this year. So as a result, you know, I think that there's a need to do this now rather than later. So with that, I stand to answer any questions you may have and ask for your approval.
Questions before?
Just a comment here, Kirk. I noticed on this, on this sales quote, it's got a date of 5/31/15.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm assuming that's a typo?
Yes, Madam Chair, and I always do that, I don't know why I do that, but I always do that. Madam Chair and Madam Commissioner, that is a typo. We are good to go on that.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Whalen and a second by Commissioner Haney. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Very good, thank you much.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a ride in?
If you want a ride in the back, feel free.
All right, our next item is the update on correctional facility and law enforcement center. Construction change orders.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Just fine. The clock is ticking. Got a smile on my face. That's just a follow-up.
So funny.
So we. So we. It's not very nice.
He's talking about the, you know.
Project.
Oh, I see.
That's what I was.
Get ready, Steve. Because maybe you don't turn it out like I do, so. Anyway, good morning. And what you have before you is two change orders. And we're really getting down to the wire here. As you know, in two weeks, you're going to have the ribbon cutting for the, for the law enforcement center and the correctional facility. The correctional facility has two stages, but the vast majority of your expense and items are in the first stage of that correctional facility. And you have before you several changes, and these have been in the hopper for quite a while because once they recognize a issue, they research it, the architects study it, look for cost savings, so do the construction engineers. And before it ever gets to you folks, we've discussed it at committee probably three, four, or five times, and then they do a summary on it. So I won't go through them all. If you have some questions, I know there's some big issues on there and some smaller ones. And there's even some credits on there, which is really nice. In fact, just jumping to the law enforcement center, there's a $15,000 credit for revision of the camera storage and a $7,000 for the fire pump on it, which is really good. But I think what's really kind of nice, and we went over these yesterday, the, for the correctional center, where the contractors only used about 50% of the contingency. So there's still a balance of about $400,000, maybe $375,000. I think we clarified that at the end of the meeting. So there's still about $375,000 with the contingency. Now, we have a stage two back there, but again, that is a, that is a very small part of that. And on the law enforcement center, the contingency, the contractor's contingency is still at $184,000, and that's winding up with about two weeks left. So I think, I'll certainly answer any questions on this. There are several items listed, but I guess the point being is that they are staying certainly within their contingencies with, I'll say, no cost overruns at this, at this time. And that's really nice. We knew there would be some changes, and there is a lot of changes. But boy, when you look at the details of what is needed in these facilities, both of them. And then they have two going at the same time. You get a lot of opportunity for additions. And frankly, the owners have asked for some additions in regards to that. Door swings and door lighting and some different counters and things like that, so.
Questions? No questions? All right, well, you're not looking for any action.
Yeah, I would ask for approval of number 12 and number 13, change orders, number 12 and 13.
Number 12 and number.
Remove approval.
You have a motion to approve by Commissioner Haney and a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes, thank you very much. All right, committee reports. Commissioner Campbell?
All right, on last Tuesday, after our board meeting, we did have a personal issues committee meeting, and we we did deal with the position that we talked about today with Lori in our auditor's office. We did touch base on a couple of other pending matters in the attorney's office. And then we also put on our agenda pursuant to look at a long-term plan for what our planning department will look like. I know we've dealt with hiring a temporary service to help us out, but we'll be starting that process soon regarding that. Then on, that was the only meeting I had last week. Then yesterday, we had our juvenile construction meeting, it was in the morning. And that one is moving right along. We found, we fixed some plumbing issues that were creating some backup from before. So that's taken care of. I think we did talk about, there's that one area that's close to the family service center where they're going to have to dig down to make sure that they reach native soil to work on the proper foundation. And we're hopeful that that doesn't lead to surprises that would require us to do some additional foundation work. And then, other than that, and I think the footing, the footings and everything will be scheduled to go in pretty soon. And Stephen, they're going to be looking at starting the steel, putting the steel up. So it's, you're going to start to see a frame pretty soon. And the interior remodeling continues to be going about. It's mostly right now the demolition still, I think, if you call it that. And then we did, we did talk extensively about a plan for that facility. Around the windows all has asbestos in the caulking. And so we're, you know, we've got a recommended plan in place as to how we're going to deal with that. And most of that, most of those dollars are already incorporated into our plan. I think there might be a few dollars in there that we're not, but it's nothing extreme. So we don't want that to hold up the project. So that's, we're going to be hopefully moving on that soon. Then later in the afternoon, then, we had the correctional facility and law enforcement center update. And that is just, as the LEC, of course, is pretty much done there. As we speak, they're putting furniture in the offices. So it's pretty much complete. The correctional facility is, they got a tight schedule over the next two weeks to be ready for the ribbon cutting as well as the turnover date to our staff. Was scheduled to be July 30th. So that's, we've got some tight timelines to meet, to get that done. But construction engineers seem to think that they were going to be able to do that. Then after that, then, we had our, scheduling events subcommittee meeting, and all is going well there. I do want to, for the board's information, on Monday morning at 9 o'clock, from 9:00 to 11:00 is the media. They are going to meet and be given a briefing at 9:00 a.m., at which time they will have two hours to go in and see areas of the facility that will, that they can tape that will not be able to have access beyond that point. So this is their one shot at being able to tape certain areas of both facilities. And then from 11:00 to 6:00 on the Monday, the 23rd, we will be available for, both facilities will be open for tours. And of course, we certainly like as many of us as possible to, to be available, to meet and greet and talk with people as they, in groups as they go through.
Monday the 23rd.
Monday the 23rd, yep. You know, so if you can be there at, if you want to be there at 9:00, from 9:00 o'clock on, you're welcome to do so. They're all, we're going to do a brief welcome to them. And then the deputies in the Morehead PD are going to give instructions on how they want to handle the media tour for the remaining portion of those two hours. Then the, of course, the ribbon cutting is Tuesday, the 24th. And we are trying to, we have our first look, had our first look yesterday of a rough draft of the program itself. There's some modifications that we have to make to that. We are planning on holding our final meeting on that. I believe that is next Tuesday, right after our board meeting, or after, if we have a pick meeting and then that. The announcements went out for both those days' events. They went out electronically and by mail yesterday to a whole lot of folks. And so hopefully, we'll have a good turnout. And that concludes my report unless there's any questions.
Questions? Thank you, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Haney.
I was on hiatus all week, so.
Commissioner Gross?
The one meeting I had was West Central initiative. Had a long talk with Anna Wasika, the president, the CEO. And they're looking for a representative from Clay County to sit on the governing board. I guess we don't have one anymore. We used to have one, but now I don't even know who that was. But there's no representative from Clay County on that board. They're looking for someone to serve on that. The pay is really good. You get mileage to go down there and stuff, but other than that, it's a volunteer thing, you know. They're looking for some to represent Clay County on that.
I think you'd be an excellent candidate.
No, I'm already on the board, so I, they're looking.
So they need someone different.
They want someone from the Clay County, not, not a commissioner.
Oh, okay, okay.
So if you know somebody that will want to sit.
Is it monthly or?
Pardon?
Is it every month?
Yeah, it's pretty much a monthly meeting. Then they have a finance committee, they have a different committees, loan committee and stuff like that.
So this is for West Central initiative?
Yes.
Okay.
So if you know somebody that may have some interest in it, but.
Well, Madam Chair and Commissioner Gross, then, for clarification, this is an appointment by the West Central Board, not by the county commissioners, then, correct?
I think it would be, yeah.
Yes, I would think it would be.
Because the guy from Wilkins County, Stephen Kent, asked me about it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would think so. I mean, they're expressing interest, but just for clarity is that you would not be appointing them as a board to this person because then they would be entitled to.
No, no, no.
Yeah, okay.
It's just to be in the board, yes.
Very good, thank you.
They had presentations on demographics. They were showing Clay County, by 2020, we're going to be at 64,000, 2030. They're looking at 67,000, 2040, 69,000. They're looking at Clay County to continue growing. They talked about the census in 2020, how the importance of it. It is, right now, we are getting $1,532 a year for every person in the state of Minnesota. So it's important for everybody to be, for every 10 years, we get $15,000. I mean, that's how much federal funds come in, you know, for each person in the state of Minnesota. So it's important that everybody gets counted and that we look at the census, not as, that we're searching for people that is just, we just want to count everybody that's here. So trying to put that emphasis out there. Then we had another presentation from the University of Minnesota Humphrey Institute on autonomous vehicles. It was, I mean, they are getting very serious about these vehicles, you know. They're talking about 90% of the vehicle accidents are caused by human error, you know. So they're really trying to look at that, you know, trying to cut down on that. And they said, if a car was introduced today, it wouldn't pass safety standards because of all the accidents causes and stuff like that, so. So they're really looking to try and improve that. I mean, things that would happen, you could come away with narrower roads. You wouldn't need the roads just because the cars would drive straight, you know. You wouldn't have to build your roads quite as wide anymore. You'd probably have to have a truck route or something like that, you know. People could live longer in their homes because they'd have a car coming to their homes to pick them up, you know. Another thing they're talking about, people could drink longer at night, too. So you can have someone pick you up at night and you know, just.
And they'd die sooner.
Yeah, so whatever. But also, you know, what happens if there's a storm and a car goes out, you know? I don't know what, how the technology is going to be on that, you know. So it's just, there's just a lot of things going on. But it was just interesting to hear what our world is, I mean, they were referring back to when we switch from horses to cars, the, how we had to transfer our thoughts from that. You know, we probably never thought that was going to happen. We, I mean, I wasn't there, but what was going to happen. But I mean, we were looking at those autonomous vehicles. They're coming, they're going to be part of our lives, you know. Another thing, they talked about electric cars and fuel tax, you know. Electric cars don't pay any fuel tax, so should we increase the fuel tax? Well, are you going to get more money with more electric cars? So, you know, another discussion on that, too. But it's a very interesting meeting on vehicles and stuff like that. Excuse me, did you have a?
No, I was going to, I was just going to mention, I, you know, you think back to, most of us can remember the old rotary phones we used to have in Elko, we had phones.
Yeah, and that's another thing, they talked about kids, you know, about cars and stuff like that. You know, the kids now is, if you took a 19-year-old kid, took his car away, how offended would he be? Or if he took his phone away? Which, which would he miss the most, his phone or his car, you know? It's just, and they were talking about, you know, we think our kids are just sitting there on their phones. Who has more friends? They probably have more friends on their phone than we have normally. I don't, I don't know, you know. But you say how many friends you have, he'd probably give you a whole list of friends that he's got on his phone, you know. But we look at his friends as face to face, you know. So it was a very interesting meeting. And it was just a lot of information that's coming in the future. It was a good meeting. That was the only meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And the only thing I had was the construction meeting on the detention center. And Kevin already went over that, it's going well. And speech should be picked up there soon, so that was it for me.
Thank you. I also attended the personal issues committee last week. We discussed at this meeting the additional requirement for human mapping by Buffalo Red last, and it's about $30,000 extra. And Commissioner Campbell had talked about reaching out to Buffalo Red to see if they would be interested in adding some additional dollars. Their initial motion when we did this a year and a half ago was to match 50/50, I believe. So that was in their motion. And so unless something's changed, that was still their decision to follow through on their commitment there. So that's, that helps out us. And coming up this week, this is my plug for the Clay County Fair. And I do know that we have government day on Thursday. And so whoever is, whatever departments are planning on being there, that has been advertised that we will be there, so I hope we have some.
It's this Thursday?
It's this all weekend, yep. Thursday through Sunday.
All right.
Brian, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, and to follow up on your Buffalo Red request, at 8:18 this morning, Bruce advised me that last night, the board did confirm the 50% of the total cost. So of the $75,000 and the additional costs. So that's very good news for, for us. So, and then one of the, I guess what I have in front of me here also been dealing with Ben Olson, planning and zoning. And just so you know, we've worked out a schedule. And I think, Madam Chair, you've been in on most of the emails on this. But the way we have it right now, the first Wednesday of the month, 9:00 to 4:00, Mr. Olson will be in the office here. On the second week, then, on Thursday, he will be virtual time, meaning he will have internet face-to-face time available. And then on the third week of the, of the month, he will be in the office from 10:00 to 4:30. And then, of course, board adjustments at 5:30 and planning commission at 7:00. And then on the fourth Thursday, he'll have more virtual time. So we will have the availability of the planner every single week. And of course, he's available by phone and things as well in between times. So we have some distinct office times that we can set up appointments and things with, with people if they need to contact you. So I just wanted to let you know that.
So Brian, on those virtual hours, he'll be available. Will we be billed only for what we use or billed for that whole slot?
No, Madam Chair. He, yeah, I've got to follow up on that because if we stated, I said the two to four hours, and I think we made a modification on that because he said that he would be available, that the time slot that we identify, we pay for. But if we reduce those hours and he can, is allowed to work on other things. So I need to clarify that, but I.
And then will we have a room set up for people to go into to do those virtual? So we'll have the computer unit set up for them to do that?
Yes, Madam Chair. I've talked to Mark and I'll, again, finalize that. But we will have a place where a person can then sit down and, and visit with him face to.
Okay.
Face to face on the computer in this modern world.
Yeah, and then one step further, could someone then Skype him from their personal computer at home? I mean, will there be availability to do that?
Madam Chair, I do believe that is availability. I don't know that we've talked about that. We've talked, certainly about, you know, giving out his number and things in the toll-free number and things so they could call him, but I'll check up on that.
What is the length of this contract, are we just, month by month or?
Yes, pretty much. Madam Chair and Commissioner Gross, I believe it was a three-month contract with a 30-day out on either party. So, yeah, 30 days, we can. out on either party, so yeah, 30 days, so we can. And again, I, one of the things that we talked about is, is, and we need to move forward on that, is trying to figure out what we want and what we need in Clay County as we go forward, you know, because I think the enforcement issue of permits is a real issue, and that needs to, we need to know where we're going with that, when we go down that road. So if we take a breath for a couple of weeks, maybe a month, or a month and a half, I know we got to go quickly on this, but, but I think we need to know, feel comfortable in the direction we're going to, so that's just my thought on it, anyway.
Okay.
Okay, I attended the pick meeting, that's already been addressed, the planning schedule, I've already talked about that. The city manager from Morehead was over yesterday morning, we discussed some things, and she asked me to help out on the final selection of their chief of police, so that it'll be a couple candidates, and I understand Commissioner Wayland's going to be involved in that, too. Juvenile construction, that's been discussed in detail. It's, you know, getting out of the ground, and with, when you're remodeling, there's always some doubts, but they have got a good handle on where they're going to go. They found some pipes that were causing some leaks in the building already, that gee, how long was that busted apart there? 10 to 15 feet or something like that on the ground, and so it's, it's going well when you think of that. And, and construction committee with the law enforcement center and the correctional facility. We had quite a lengthy meeting yesterday, talked about a lot of things, and it's just really going well. We had that meeting and preparing for the ribbon cutting, and moving along quite, quite really good on that as well. I did contact MCIT yesterday afternoon, after that, because we want to get coverage on those buildings before the public has access to them, and once we get the certificate of occupancy, then they're our responsibility anyway, and, and so if there's a little overlap, that's okay, we want to be covered, so I've gotten some responses on that. And that about concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Steve?
Madam Chair, thank you. I participated in the pick committee last Tuesday. I also participated in the different jail and juvenile facility meetings. I also participated in a meeting with, with Administrator Berg and, and the city, city manager. I'm trying to get the juvenile center in order, I think that one of the things I'd like to talk about today is we, we did post the position internally, and the position did close this last Sunday, and so we, we had four applicants, potential applicants that, that put their application in, and so I don't know if the board will be prepared to look at, get some interview times, but it would be wonderful.
Well, I know last week, we discussed commissioners being involved in that, and I, I think because of their involvement, Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell would like to have a say in that. I had mentioned that I also would, too, just because it's a department head, I'm not sure what your timeline is, when you want to do interviews, if you want to do it this week, that may change who can be involved or not.
Whatever works into your, into your schedules is, is fine.
Okay.
We just, we need to go as a public meeting, so.
Sure.
Okay, we'll set up, Madam Chair, we'll set up a schedule.
Okay, great.
About like Wednesday, July 18th, that's, that's a week from tomorrow, that would work.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else? Saw your mugshot in the paper today.
Yeah.
All right, Colleen, do you have anything? All right, if not, we are adjourned.